Thanks for being a part of the conversation this morning. It's been a couple of weeks. I've been crazy busy. You are, well, the summer, summer's kind of winding down and so I have to, is this your first? No, this isn't your first summer, is it? Second summer? Oh my gosh. All right. Well, might as well do the, uh, do the report card. Uh, how did it go?
It went great. Um, yeah, it was, it was busy and you know, beautiful, but there's no winding down. I mean, this summer was, it, I think for everyone, it was just not fair. It just came to a screeching halt.
Yeah.
Um, the, the weather has just not been a typical, um, northern Michigan summer. I didn't even wait till September 1st. Um, yeah, I just, the weather turned so abruptly and, it's just really not been fair. So.
And, and speaking of like, speaking of the word fair, I think one of the hottest weeks was fair week, uh, in, uh, in the area and it was definitely more toasty this year than it was last year, but hopefully it, it didn't incur, discourage people, you know, the, the state park is back open, uh, reservations, you know, increasing their activities out and about. There's just a lot of vibe out there and I hope that, uh, overall in the conversations that you have with the visitors bureau and the chamber and others, uh, that you got a good feeling of, of a good summer in the Luddington area.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, we had, um, you know, we had a fantastic summer, especially from the city's perspective. You know, events were up, um, and we're just, you know, as busy as ever and, you know, honestly, we, we used to talk about in city government in general, not just here in Luddington specifically, but about how we had a, a slow season, um, the off season, right? Where we could catch up, we could do filing, we could work on other projects, um, work on administrative tasks, um, improve ordinances, things like that, when, when we weren't in that busy summer stretch. We don't have that anymore. Um, and that's not necessarily tied to the tourist season. It's just busy year round. The winters have been milder. Um, contractors are able to pull construction projects off year round, um, depending on the type of construction. Um, we just find ourselves, you know, busy 365 and, um, that changes the workflow. Um, and we definitely see that here in Luddington too. So, um, it's something that we're all adapting to.
It's great to hear. Uh, put you on the spot for a moment, uh, if I, if I could, uh, sometimes I do that, but, uh, it's fairly easy question. Um, you know, with, uh, with, uh, you know, things improving here and there, uh, what, what excites you the most about Luddington? Is there, um, something new that's being built or, uh, and again, not necessarily looking for any sort of, you know, breaking news or top secret information or anything like that, but just more of, uh, you know, when we see growth happening, sometimes it's nice to be able to see and tell, uh, listeners and viewers and the community in general, uh, that, that this is what from a city standpoint, you're looking forward to either this year or maybe something that's inked for next year.
I wouldn't say that it's anything in particular. I would just say that it's people and opportunity. Um, I would just say every day that the, that the folks that show up, not just city staff, but volunteers. I mean, the, the folks that are part of, um, the friends of Luddington, uh, city parks, um, the volun- different volunteer organizations that are looking to make Luddington a better place, um, for year-round residents, for, um, tourists, for, you know, for everyone who, everyone who's here and loves Luddington. Um, that's what makes me excited. It may be a particular project, you know, like, um, improving playground equipment at Stern's Park. Um, but just overall, those people, get me really excited for what's to come. Next year and two years, um, it might be the, the trail, the trails, group here in Mason County, um, in the work that's going to come with that. Um, I'm just, I'm just really excited for, um, for, you know, all of the, the hard work and the visions and quite frankly, the, the fruit of the labor that's going to come from, from, uh, the work of all of those people.
That's great. Uh, as it should be. Uh, we're, we're looking forward to growth and, and, um, improvements. But you know, when, when people are like, hey, I can't wait to get back to Luddington, can't wait to vacation. Uh, you know, the, the snowbirds and the, and, uh, you know, it just different aspects that, uh, kind of affect all of our lives. Uh, we see that we had some sand that, uh, came in, uh, with the, with the strong winds the other day. And it looked like, uh, DPW and the, uh, and the county as well, uh, you know, hand in hand helped to clean things up. What, what was that reaction like from a city standpoint?
Yeah. So, um, our DPW superintendent let us know, um, earlier on in the week, that with the 50 plus mile an hour winds, we were anticipating that, they were going to work hard to get some of the snow fence up already, um, in anticipation of the, of the sand winding up or preventing the sand from winding up in, in streets. Um, unfortunately that wind came really quickly, really aggressively, um, and still, you know, mother nature took over. Um, we had two plus feet of sand in some spots. Um, and then even Saturday morning, we had to close the entrance of Stern's, Stern's, uh, Stern's Drive. Um, cause there were two vehicles stuck in over two feet of, two plus feet of, uh, sand drifts in our, you know, parks, uh, parks crew leader and cemetery sexton and some other staff members had to pull some vehicles out early Saturday morning. And, um, you know, you really can't win when it comes to mother nature. We, we do our best and again, here we are. It's, it's barely the first week of September and here we are already taking these, uh, these types of measures. Um, but it's unfortunately what, what we have to do.
Does it, does it reinforce, um, because you know, when those, uh, or maybe you don't know. Uh, now I think you were, you started when this happened, I think last year, when the fences went up. Uh, you have, uh, you have people on, don't mind the pun, on both sides of, of the fence, like, hey, it's too early. Uh, but then when sand and, and, and the wind picks up as fall, uh, starts to set in, it almost gives you, um, the support that you need, that this is the time to put those, those fences up.
It like, like I said, it, it is unfortunate because you know, we live in a climate where, um, it's, it's completely unpredictable and, um, we live on a shoreline, an aggressive shoreline. Um, and you know, we do the best we can and, um, in, in this case, the, the forecast really dictated when some of that snow fence, uh, was going to go up. Um, and, uh, mother nature proved us correct this past weekend. So, I think we still have an opportunity for some really nice weather, um, here in September, but I think we also have a very, very good chance of some snow on the forecast sooner than we all would like. So it's just the reality of living in Michigan.
I think it snowed, uh, this past weekend in the UP. If I remember, I saw a report come, come down. I can't remember what city it was, but, uh, they, uh, they were showing some flakes in, in the video. Uh, things changing this Saturday as well, uh, the beautiful, I mean, and they turned out really, uh, nice. The Petunias, uh, down, uh, Luddington Avenue and around the marina, uh, they bloomed. Uh, there was a little bit of struggle this year. We posted that on our Facebook page and saw a lot of support, uh, from the community because of the support from the fire department and from DPW, uh, when it came to, uh, some mechanical issues with the water truck for the Petunia Parade, uh, and, uh, that was a huge step up for, for DPW and for the, uh, for the fire department. And you know, even though there, there's still that confusion out there that people think, okay, this is a kind of a city program, but it's not. It's a, it's a completely, uh, uh, independent volunteer group, uh, that plants the Petunias and maintains it with block captains and volunteer groups and such. And, uh, when that water truck went down, uh, what about a month, month and a half, two months ago?
Yeah, just about now.
Yeah. You, you got the reach out and, and that was, uh, that was kind of a no brainer. Yeah, we're going to help you because it, that's the, the look of, of sit, of the city of Luddington, right?
Yes. And it's also the, you know, the spirit of, of smaller communities and thankfully we're able to do those things. Um, and you know, we, we all work together and come together and, um, I, I think we, we try to do that no matter where we can. And if the roles were reversed and it was a city program and, and we had a group like the Petunia Group, I, I think they would do the same, um, the same for the city. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful for the, the partners that, that we all have here.
And it really, uh, the, the Petunias beautify the community. They're coming out this Saturday, uh, as, uh, part of the end of the season and the Petunias will be, be, be pulled up. Uh, that brings us to a reminder for those that are listening and viewing is that just like during the planning season, uh, when, uh, when you're down to one lane, you've got, uh, you've got, uh, orange cones and you've got volunteers out there and, and, and safety is the number one factor that we want to make sure that everybody knows that there's going to be that, uh, heightened activity down avenue and, and by the marina as well, uh, this Saturday. Uh, let's get into some of the topics that we have, um, on the city council agenda. Uh, you are, uh, removing the definition in the short-term rental ordinance. And I know that's kind of a hot topic because people are, you know, when they have their homes or they're, you know, maybe it's a vacation home or they purchased this home so that they can use it for a rental. Is this definition change a dramatic change? Is it something that, uh, it, it, people should kind of, uh, you know, pay attention to? What's your thoughts?
Um, I, so the purpose of this change is, is really, um, to just en- ensure consistency and, and clarity. Um, in the, with the adoption of the unified development ordinance, um, limited short-term rentals, um, was removed from the UDO. Um, it's a use that was discontinued with the UDO. Um, but the definition of a limited short-term rental was left in our, um, definition section of our ordinances.
Okay.
So we are recommending to just remove that definition as it's no longer, um, an allowed use in the UDO.
And, and that, that obviously, go ahead.
Yeah. So the, the purpose of, of this change is so our ordinance, um, the section of our ordinance where this definition is mentioned is consistent with the UDO.
Yeah.
Um, it, 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 it's just to provide that clarity and consistency. Um, it does not actually, um, change any of the intent, um, for those who have short-term rentals and what was communicated during the unified development ordinance process over the last several years.
Okay. All right. Uh, thanks for clarifying that. Uh, you have a, uh, plan or a proposal to purchase some columbariums. Uh, and, uh, when I looked at that word, I was like, you know, I have no idea what that was. And so you clarified before we went on the air. Uh, tell us, tell the viewers and listeners a little bit about that and, and the reasons why, if you don't mind.
Sure. So columbariums, um, are essentially the structure that holds cremated remains in our cemetery. Um, columbariums, um, in this case, they hold 60, um, double, uh, niches. Um, so they hold 120, um, cremated remains.
Okay.
Um, when our cemetery was upgraded several years ago, there is an area that is designated for columbariums and they hold five, it's designed to hold five columbariums. We currently have three, two of which are completely full. The third one is 70% full. And historically, when each columbarium hits that 70% um, uh, mark, we, we prepare and construct the next one. Um, so we are looking at constructing a fourth one. Um, and when the cemetery and parks committee looked at the cost of constructing a fourth one, compared to the cost of when we built the last one several years ago, it seemed, um, it seemed, um, kind of cost prohibit, cost prohibitive to wait and not construct the fifth one at the same time as well.
Yeah.
Um, so we are looking at constructing both the fourth and the fifth columbarium. Um, we can save money on the crane costs and, um, the, uh, foundation work as it would, you know, the, those, um, contractors would only have to come out once instead of twice. Um, it saved the city about 11 or $12,000 to construct both of these instead of one of these. Um, over the last decade or so, it has become more common, um, for loved ones, uh, to choose cremation over burials.
Are you seeing, you are seeing an increase in that?
Yes. Yes. Our cemetery sexton has, uh, seen that, seen that number rise over the years. So, um, cremation is becoming more common, um, and we have seen more of a demand in, in this type of service. Um, so we are looking to add the last two columbariums in our cemetery. We have room in other areas of our cemetery for more columbariums. We just don't have the, um, the area prepared for that yet. This is just a, a pre-set up area with concrete poured and everything's level. Um, so there's future growth at the cemetery for more columbariums down the road. This is just a predefined area with sidewalk and all of those things where, where we had, the city had kind of a, a plan for five. Um, again, we have three and we're looking for the fourth and fifth.
And you know, while you're talking about that, I was thinking about, um, and I, I don't think I have the term right, but it's the natural burials or, um, the envi- what, what, what is that term where, uh, there's a section of the cemetery that is for, um, you know, uh, where you're, you're, you're planted and, and, and you want to, uh, a tr- you want a tree planted above you or, or stuff. Do you know what I'm talking about there? We had talked about that in the past and I just can't think of the, the terms there.
Um, like a, like those who choose like a tree pod?
Yes. Is that, is that happening? Cause I, I know that was on the agenda a while back. Um, but, uh, that there was sort of a focus of that in the, in the cemetery, but I wondered, we haven't re- we haven't visited that in a long time. And maybe we can push that off into the future, uh, and, and chat a little bit about it. But I wonder if that is, um, it is growing in popularity as well.
I believe there's a section of our cemetery where, um, individuals can select. I also don't know the term. I generally refer to them as green burials.
Yeah. Okay. There you go. Yeah.
But, but our, our cemetery sexton Kirk Keithimer may or may not be listening and he may have some very strong opinions about what I, what I am saying. Um, so Kirk, if you're listening, I'm very sorry. Um, and yes, we could have Kirk on at, at a later date and, and he would be really happy to speak with everyone. This is, uh, he is excellent in what he does. And, uh, yeah, he'd be really happy to, to, to speak on this.
And I think it'd be an interesting topic to, um, you know, to tell people about and, and see what, you know, what, what that's, uh, you know, that's happening and, and, and the, again, the popularity if, if there is of that. Um, you have an update, uh, expected on the sidewalk ordinance. This is an interesting topic. And I had no idea about this. So, uh, and, and tell me, I'll kind of explain it based on what you told me and tell me if I'm on the right track or if, if, if wrong, is that if you have a home, uh, in the city of Luddington and there's no sidewalk in front of it, you're not necessarily required to put a sidewalk in front of it. But the person that if, if you sell your home and the person that purchases your home, that becomes something that they inherit as, uh, a measure that they have to do at that point. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and there are areas where there is no sidewalks in the city of Luddington and, um, there are some, uh, areas that of, of, you know, that areas that don't have sidewalks that definitely should have sidewalks. And things have, uh, things have, have not really taken place there. Ta- take us through that if you don't mind.
So it's my understanding that, um, the last several years, um, property owners could appeal to the department of public works if they were selling their home and, um, wanted a waiver, um, for the requirement of having to install a sidewalk.
More to make it attractive for that, that buyer or, or for when they put it on the market. Cause if you put your home on the market and, uh, say, well, you have to put it, put a sidewalk in, uh, that's an additional expense. And, and I'll ask you, ask you the expense side of it, if you have, have any idea on that in, in a moment. But i- is that kind of the foundation of why those waivers, uh, you know, rise to the top?
I mean, really the, the, the city has identified priority areas for sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, the purpose of those waivers are if it's cost prohibitive.
Okay.
Or if, or if you own a home outside of the sidewalk priority area.
Okay.
So, um, the sidewalk priority area generally would be, um, anywhere near downtown, near the schools, near the beach, um, where there's already existing sidewalk and you have a home near existing sidewalk that is on a block that doesn't happen to connect already.
Okay.
So kind of like a miss, a gap.
Yep.
Um, uh, tho- like those types of areas. Um, and so those would be the priority areas. You would receive a waiver if you, if your property is on difficult terrain.
Okay.
And say you would have to construct a retaining wall in order to install that sidewalk. That would make that sidewalk, uh, cost prohibitive to install.
And, and do you have any idea? I mean, obviously it's going to be depend on the area, the, the, how much space you have to fill with sidewalk and so on and so forth. But when you have the conversation with these homeowners, uh, is it, um, is it a lot? Is it, um, is it, when you say cost prohibitive, prohibitive, what are we talking about? Uh, any ideas there?
Uh, depending on your lot frontage, it could be two to four, $5,000.
Hmm. Okay. Yeah.
Um, so, so the, the process, um, to get a variance was happening under the department of public works. Um, now the, the proposed process is now, um, for the property owner to go to the zoning board of appeals. Um, and this is to ensure that, um, really essentially that more sidewalks are being installed.
Okay.
Um, we were, we were really getting away from, um, sidewalks having to be installed, uh, having to be installed, um, which is a significant master plan goal. Um, and that goal is to improve walkability um, and have a pedestrian friendly community. Um, and we were, um, giving waivers to property owners, um, often. Um, which is appropriate if it's, you know, cost prohibitive or for other, you know, for other reasons. But really for any other type of variance, um, a property owner would have to go to the ZBA. So this is a more appropriate route, um, for a property owner to take. Um, it also provides consistency, um, and, um, really is, is, is a, is a consistent avenue, especially with, you know, staff turnovers and, and, and other, and other things. Um, and with sidewalks being a master plan goal and a goal of the planning commission, uh, as a ZBA route, it is, is more appropriate than a department of public works, uh, avenue. Um, so, so that's the, so that's the proposed amendment. Um, you know, there are, there's a, there's a defined list of why you wouldn't have to install a sidewalk. Um, the exemptions are listed in the memorandum in the packet and those are, um, that there's practical difficulties in constructing a sidewalk, such as natural features, um, on your property. Um, the property in question does not have frontage on a public street. Uh, the property is not in the target area, like I was explaining earlier, the sidewalk up priority area. Um, it wouldn't connect to any other sidewalks because no sidewalks exist on the neighboring properties. Uh, there are practical difficulties that are self-created by the pro- property owners or previous owners of the property, um, are not grounds for an exemption. Um.
Do you see that this will, um, well, let me ask you this. Before, i- i- if this goes through tonight and, uh, there's that, there's the change of, of, you know, the approval of the waivers and the consideration and such. Was it prior that it was, um, uh, it's, it was, uh, it wasn't, hey, this is, this is this point, so we need to, we need to grant the waiver. Um, was there too many, oh, I, let me say it this way. You have all of these, um, steps that, that if, if the way, that, that will approve that waiver. Did it start to kind of veer away from those points? And so now with the, with the proposed new process, you'll see that not as many waivers will be approved. What's your thoughts between the transition?
I think not as many waivers will be approved.
Okay.
Um, I think that, um, I think that we'll start, we'll start to see with home sales, um, more sidewalk installation, um, and, and that's, and that's a good thing for residential, um, you know, residential property owners. Um, that's a great thing for kids and their parents who walk to school. Um, it's, it's a great thing for everyone. Um, I realize that there is a cost involved. Um, but, but overall, there are many areas in our community that have missing sidewalks. Um, especially near our schools.
Yeah.
Um, and even near our downtown. Um, and, and this is a way to, you know, start accomplishing those goals. And, um, and maybe, you know, and this, it's, it's a way to get there, start getting there more consistently.
Yeah. You know, I, I think we, we definitely do not have enough time to talk about, uh, uh, tearing off the Band-Aid of the sidewalk to the elementary school. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I'm hoping that it hasn't, so much time hasn't gone by that, that isn't a, isn't still a priority, if that makes sense. Or a conversation topic that, that's happening somewhere behind the scenes and, uh, maybe we can revisit that in the future, if that makes sense.
I would say that that conversation is still happening on a monthly basis.
Okay. That's good to hear. That is good to hear. I, and, and let's, uh, you know, now that school's back in session, might be something to, to, to put into one of our conversations that we have here, here in the near future. Uh, you have, uh, real quick, uh, it'll take 60 seconds on this, the, um, letter of understanding to the, uh, the police union, is that right?
Yes.
Take us, take us through that. If you've got some, some notes on it, or is it more just, uh, uh, um, something for the chief to, to, to present tonight?
It's something for the chief to present tonight, but it really is just in, it's an agreement between, um, the police administration and the police union, um, to allow for some better, um, some better administration internally in terms of shift, shift preference, um, with the, uh, with the collective bargaining unit. with the, with the collective bargaining unit. So I, I believe right now that the, that the police chief has, has no control over who is assigned to what shift.
Okay, okay.
And, and this is an, an amendment to, to the agreement that, that allows, that allows the, the police chief to, to help balance out what, who is on what shift. And in this amendment would allow that to, to, to start happening immediately rather than the next union contract, which wouldn't go into effect until January 1st of 2027.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So this is kind of an amendment in the middle of a, of a union contract.
So those are kind of two surprises in the conversation that you and I are having today. One, this, not only the, I, I think I had no idea that the police chief didn't have much say into, into scheduling of, of his own or her own officers and, and, and obviously his and in our community in Luddington. And then the second was, and I wonder if, going back to the sidewalk conversation that we've had today, do you, have you run into a lot of people that have the impression that the sidewalks are city responsibility and for the city to put in and all of that, rather than homeowners? Or, are you having that conversation or, or is that just kind of well-known out there?
I, I would say that the sidewalk conversation is, is constant education. We have, you know, sidewalks, sidewalks are always a challenge, especially in residential areas. Sidewalks. You asked, you asked a question that opens a can of worms.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So it, it depends on so many factors. Sidewalks are, are generally a, a cost that is, once they're installed, you tend to see a 50/50 cost share.
Okay.
Between the municipality and the property owner.
Okay.
That's very common. For sidewalk installation in residential areas, you usually see that cost on the property owner. In downtown areas, usually you see your DDA install those. Around schools, if they're new schools, you see the school system put those in. If a municipality puts them in, a lot of times those are specific bonds targeted towards sidewalks. Sometimes they'll go in as part of a road project.
Okay. So it's not necessarily always, well, we know that already. Yeah.
It's not a one size fits all.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Well, I appreciate you taking the time this morning, chatting with us in regards to this. And let's, let's pick up this conversation in the future. Just listening to, you know, the information that you provide, you know, it, it's exciting as, as somebody that visits the area, has lived in the area, shops and eats and dines in the area, to be able to, to see some of these improvements, but also see, you know, where there might be some challenges and how to overcome those challenges. Or be able to clarify that for that homeowner or the community in general. Cause sometimes, you know, we, we look at something, we perceive something and it's good to be able to clarify that. So we appreciate you, you taking, taking the time to do that this morning. I know you've got to get to a meeting. We have another segment coming up in just a little bit with Lori from West Michigan CMH. They've got the, the event at Waterfront Park coming up tomorrow night. So we're looking forward to that. We'll be there broadcasting live. And, and Caitlin, we'll chat with you coming up in just a couple of weeks from now. How's that?
Thanks, Chris. That sounds great.
All right. Thanks for taking the time with us. It is 102.7 Mom FM and Hot Country Hits 99.9.